Good evening and welcome to the November 21st meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could you please join me in a pledge allegiance?
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a regular city council agenda this evening, but before we embark on that, I would like to make a few statements. First of all, I think I know I speak for the entire city council and the city of Lake Forest that we are deeply disappointed in the actions and what has happened at District 67 School Board. And to that end, I'd like to read the following statement. After holding an executive session with the Lake Forest City Council this evening, I have directed the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners to investigate the circumstances surrounding allegations of inappropriate conversations involving a police department student resource officer. The SRO has been temporarily reassigned and won't resume his duties until the investigation is complete and the District 67 SRO program is evaluated by the city. The matter is not on the published agenda for tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. This press release will be read into the record for tonight's city council meeting as well. The Board of Fire and Police Commissioners is an established independent board comprised of Lake Forest residents and is required by state statute. It makes promotional appointments, conducts hearings, and takes action to suspend or discharge members of the fire and police departments. The mayor, with the concurrence of the city council, appoints members to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners who are recommended by the Lake Forest Caucus. Allegations that the SRO made inappropriate remarks were made by a 22-year-old former intern who worked with the police department in early 2008, occasionally assigned to work with the SRO. In January of 2009, the Lake Forest Police Department was informed that the Gurnee Police Department was conducting an investigation concerning the Deer Path Middle School principal and that the SRO was named in their report. Gurnee Police said the police officer was not a target of the investigation, nor was there any indication that the officer had committed a crime. Gurnee Police also indicated that the SRO was not in any way associated with the complaint filed against the school principal. The intern did not file any complaints with the Lake Forest Police Department and when evaluating her internship experience, gave only positive reviews. The Lake Forest Police Department's internship program typically engages interns for one college semester each, and those students work with the entire police department, including the school resource officer. The department does not actively seek interns, but responds to applications, most often from the Lake Forest College students. The department has accommodated 12 interns since 2005, when the program was introduced. The school resource officer program in District 67 has been in place for at least 10 years and also takes place within District 115. The program allows police officers and students to interact and provide mentorship opportunities for the youth in the community. The District 67 Board of Education has been elected by residents of the Lake Forest since 1993. The Lake Forest Mayor and the city council has no legal oversight concerning the school board and its duties and responsibilities. City Manager Bob Kylie states the city of Lake Forest and the police department take any allegations of employee misconduct very seriously. In accordance with Illinois state law on city personnel policies, the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners will conduct its investigation and report their findings back to the city council. The SRO has been temporarily reassigned and won't resume his duties until the investigation is complete and the District 67 SRO program is evaluated by the city. Thank you.
And I'd like to ask some members of the council showing our concern and support for the resolution of the mayor that I move to affirm the statement that's been read into the record at this point.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda this evening is reports of city officers. Under the comments by mayor, I just made one, we have a number of resolutions for appreciation for individuals who will be retiring. I have the first for Louise Breckman for 30 years of service. And I believe, Louise, you want to, did you want to come up and make a statement?
I just want to grab my stuff.
Sure.
Okay.
I would like to thank my husband Carl, my daughter Jessica, my second family, the finance and IT departments, and friends for coming tonight. It has been a privilege and honor working for the citizens of Lake Forest. I will remember Lake Forest as a wonderful community that cares about tradition, nature, and history. I am proud that I was part of an excellent, trustworthy, and dedicated team of city council members and city departments. It is with gratitude that I was able to attain my career achievements because of the leadership and integrity demonstrated by the city council, the audit committee, city manager Bob Kylie, finance director Kathy Reinertson, and former finance director Bob Schaefer. I will always keep fond memories of Lake Forest in my heart. Thank you.
As we all know, Louise has served the city for over 30 years, and even though I've only known her for nine of them, she has been a dedicated employee, assistant, and friend to me and many others. It is with mixed emotions that we congratulate Louise on her retirement. We will miss her, but we are looking forward to hearing of her adventures in scrapbooking, fudge making, or wherever her journey may lead.
Louise, I didn't get an opportunity to read your resolution either, so if you want to give me a moment, I want to do that as well. You can't get away that easy, come on. After 30 years, you have to hold out a little longer. Whereas Louise Breckman, aka LLL, has been a dedicated employee to the city of Lake Forest since November 9, 1981, whereas Louise Breckman will honorably retire from the city on December 31, 2011, and whereas Louise Breckman served in the following positions during her dedicated career: Assistant to the Director of Finance, November 1981; Assistant Director of Finance, May 1983. Whereas Louise Breckman's service highlights include the conversion of a legacy financial system to the current financial system, the completion of 29 audits and comprehensive annual financial reports, which resulted in a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for each of them, the project accounting for the recently constructed municipal services building, the analysis of the water fund for the Radio Read meteor project, water rate study, water usage study, and customer assistance, the preparation of voluminous ordinances, SSA pins, minutes, journal entries, and implementation of target-based budgeting, purchasing policies, and the provision of assistance through department at any time or any day or night. Whereas Louise Breckman diligently completed all the above while also upholding her status as the number-one Chicago Bears fan. So she's upset about Jay last night, I know that. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council on behalf of this administration and residents of the community hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Louise Breckman for her public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Louise Breckman on this 21st day of November, 2011. Congratulations, Louise. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Palmer, because I usually forget to do that, so. We do have three other resolutions this evening. I know that the next one on the agenda is Julie Carpenter, and Bob, I understand that unfortunately due to a death in her family, she will not be here tonight, but will be here on December 5th, so we will hold that and read that for her on December 5th. And I'm going to ask Bob Kylie to read the next two. Bob certainly worked with these two individuals for the last 21 and 24 years, so Bob, I'll give you the honor of presenting if you wish.
Thank you very much. I guess I'll ask Ken Magnus to please come forward. Certainly Ken is no stranger to these chambers, and, you know, I think it's important to point out when you take a look at the agenda here this evening that we have four longtime employees that have given tremendous dedicated service to the city over these years. And I think it says not only an awful lot about the individual employee, but also the organization. And I can tell the council that we conduct exit interviews on every employee who leaves, whether it's retirement, taking a new job, whatever the case might be. And it always comes back when I ask them, what are they going to miss most, they always say their fellow employees. And so we really are a family here, and Ken, I think, speaks to that as well, because most people I know in these council chambers see Ken as the city engineer, and quite frankly, Ken's one of the best engineers I've ever met. But the other thing about Ken is, he's got a great sense of humor, he gets along well with everybody in the city. When he was younger, he used to be a pretty good basketball player, but not anymore. He's lost that. The knees gave out, remember? Did that. But I think that, you know, Ken is certainly not one to shine the spotlight on himself, but I think that there's a couple of things within the resolution that definitely worth discussing. And certainly one of them is the tremendous amount of resources that this gentleman brought to the city of Lake Forest to help us maintain our infrastructure that most residents wouldn't have any idea took place. But $27 million does not grow on trees, and it takes hard work, it takes a lot of ingenuity and effort to make that kind of stuff happen. And, you know, much to Ken's chagrin, he doesn't get a finder's fee for finding that $27 million, but he just takes that on because he knows that's part of his duties and responsibilities, city engineer, to make that happen. And there's no question that Lake Forest's infrastructure is in a much better place today because of that gentleman standing right there. So let me read the resolution before I get more of a clump, Ken. Whereas Kenneth Magnus has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest, serving as the city surveyor and engineer since January 15, 1990. And whereas Kenneth Magnus will honorably retire from the city on November 30, 2011. And whereas Kenneth Magnus was instrumental in overseeing the reconstruction and rehabilitation of 10 vehicular bridges, which I might say Ken is the best bridge engineer anywhere in Illinois. That's just a plug, Ken, in case you want to keep doing that if you retire. And nine pedestrian bridges, and provided assistance in the adoption of the citywide stormwater management plan and target area program that has helped the city and residents alleviate street and basement flooding. And whereas Ken Magnus' dedication and perseverance to secure state, federal, and other grants totaling in excess of $27 million of infrastructure improvements, providing savings to the city and taxpayers. And whereas Kenneth Magnus' keenness towards a roadway testing system was guided the city in a positive direction with Long-Term Sustainability Capital Improvement Plan. And whereas Ken Magnus pursuant of being a bridge program manager along with a certified floodplain manager, in addition to being a licensed professional engineer, has been a tremendous asset to the city and the residents. And whereas Kenneth Magnus has presented with clarity and in non-technical terms at numerous city council meetings what all these engineering jargon means, and also at word meetings and neighborhood meetings. And whereas Ken's loyalty and hard work to serve the residents and upkeep of the public infrastructure exhibit his continuous professionalism and dedication to the community, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Ken Magnus for public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the clerk is hereby instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Ken on this 21st day of November.
Congratulations, Ken.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for the kind words, and I also wanted to congratulate Ramish and wish him best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
The second resolution, and I don't believe Chris Marzalik is here, I don't think he could be here this evening. Second resolution, though, is for Chris Marzalik, who was, as everybody knows, our golf professional over at Deer Path for so many years, and just very quickly. Chris will be honorably retired from the city of Lake Forest on November 30, 2011. He served in the following positions: Golf professional, starting in February of 1987, and head golf pro in March of 2003. And whereas he's been very instrumental in managing the golf pro shop, lesson program, driving range, various membership services, resulting in a high-quality golf course and enjoyment of many residents of Lake Forest. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest on behalf of the administration and residents that we express our appreciation and gratitude for Chris Marzalik for public service faithfully performed.
Move to adopt the resolution.
All in favor?
Second.
He always got to be picky about this. Motion carries, thank you, Bob. And Bob, I know we jumped a little bit ahead, but you're up next for comments by city manager.
Well, actually, this is an easy one for me, because I'm going to turn this immediately over to two individuals who are a lot smarter on this subject than I am. And one is currently sitting on the city council, Alderman Palmer. The other one is someone who left that chair not that long ago, former Alderman David Grumhouse. And I'll ask David to please come forward to the podium and explain to the city council the proposed resolution and what electrical aggregation, not aggravation, but aggregation is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's nice to be back.
Good to have you back.
I know it hasn't been too long, because I still find myself saying aye on the motions. So I guess I got to be gone a little bit longer. Anyway, I was asked by Bob and the mayor to sit on a committee with Alderman Palmer and resident Kirk Volkman to look at the question of electrical aggregation. Essentially, what aggregation is, and I know you've been briefed on this at least once, but was, aggregation was set up by the state of Illinois to allow municipalities to arrange for the provision of electrical services to residential and small business customers. The basic premise is that by pooling together both of these entities, residents and small business customers, can get much better pricing for the cost of their power, the cost of their use of their generation. Obviously, when Illinois deregulated its utilities, you know, 10 years ago, it allowed for customers to switch and split who does their distribution from who does their generation. In order to qualify for this and to pursue what's called the opt-out program, which is the program that will definitely save the most money, the city does have to pass a referendum. And that is what the committee that myself and Alderman Palmer and resident Kirk Volkman are on is looking at. Now, truthfully, this should be a very easy decision for the council and for the residents. This program should generate, you know, 10 to 20% cost savings for at least the next two years for the city, for Lake Forest residents, and it may even be more than that, and this is something that even going forward should continue to save the residents money. It is important to note that Lake Forest is not blazing a new trail here. 24 communities in Illinois have already passed these referendums, and I think all but one now have bid out the contracts, the aggregation contracts. As you can see from the examples below, these are some of the representative communities. If you look at that contract price that people are paying, the current commed rate that if, that a typical resident would be paying right now is just under eight cents. So you're really seeing 20 to 25% savings on the cost of your power versus, you know, what you would be able to do if you just accepted commed as your default provider. So the reasons for doing this are pretty compelling for the residents. You know, just briefly, in terms of, so what are the electric supply options? Well, the current option that we're under is the commed supply program. You know, this is the status quo, no actions required. This is pretty much going to stay the same with the one potential issue that, and we really won't get into this tonight, that if enough communities do this and more than 30% of all residential customers switch through aggregation, commed no longer has to offer a standard price, and it just moves to an hourly rate. Now that is something that I think eventually the legislature will figure out is something they don't want to have happen, and they will fix it, but for now, that is what will happen. The second option is available to people today, which is you as an individual customer can switch. There are many different marketers out there, I'm sure you've all gotten stuff in the mail about switching, some of you have probably already switched, and it is certainly worth doing, because it does save you money. You know, I would say if you switch on your own, you're probably going to pay about six and three-quarters to seven cents. I switched, I think I'm paying six and three-quarters right now. You know, that's a definite savings, you know, it's a one-cent savings over what you get on the commed bill, so it's definitely a positive, but it certainly doesn't offer the same savings that option three, which is what we're looking at, the opt-out program, you know, which should give you another 10 or 15% savings over that. You know, a couple of things I would point out is, you know, if we do this as a city, we will sign a limited contract, it will probably be a two-year contract. The initial savings will be a lot more in the first two years, and they are likely to be beyond that, and that's part because as commed has bought, as the Illinois Power Authority has bought their power, they've bought it in sort of over, they do it over a three-year hedging basis, and obviously power prices, for those of you that don't know, were a lot higher two years ago when they started hedging some of this power than where it is today. So there's certainly an opportunity to undercut that. Having said that, even in a flat power environment, the advantage of aggregating and, you know, buying power for 6,000 households instead of one household will still lend pretty good You know, the second point I would make is that there's really no benefit of this for the city, so that is important to know. The benefit here is for the residents and for the potentially the small business customers as well. The city really gets nothing out of this, and in fact, it could even be a negative for the city because our electric taxes will go down. You know, we get a cut of, you know, a percentage of the bills, and that will probably go lower, that will go lower. The last thing I would say in all options is that commed will continue to handle the delivery, the billing, the meter reading, and outage restoration. So this has nothing to do with service. If you switch, if the city switches, residents will, won't even know that it's happening. So, you know, from that perspective, nothing changes. The next two pages are really a detailed schedule of what we would go through, assuming the council decides that they want to go ahead with this and put it on the ballot. There are a number of requirements from the state as part of this, and we are still as a committee working through, there's some, a couple of different options we have about how we're going to pursue it and when exactly we will bid out the contract, and whether we'll get someone to work with us in front of the referendum or not until after the referendum. There are a number of meetings that have to be held, you know, public meetings with the council. So all of that is, we're still getting the details on, but it's certainly something that will be, would play out over the next three months as we get ready for the referendum in March. You know, the one other thing that we're working about is, we have been working with a consortium of some other municipalities who are looking at the same thing. At this point, we've agreed to move forward with them, I think that still has to be finalized, but to move forward and share the costs and, you know, some of the legal expertise and some of the presentations, just to try and keep the cost down and move on the same path. At this point, however, we may bid with them or without them. One of the things we are looking at is trying to figure out whether it's advantageous to be bigger or not. I would say our best guess at this point is that we may end up bidding alone, because we think we will get probably better pricing and a little bit more flexibility, but that's still to be determined and something we will work out over the next few months. For tonight, I think we are looking for approval of a revolution, uh, resolution?
A revolution.
A revolution. Initiating submission of the public question to authorize the city to adopt an opt-out program. And that's what's on your agenda for this evening, so.
David, would you just address, because I don't know as though it's really been clear, we have two ways of bringing this into a city program, the other one being opt-in, where we have the program and residents can affirmatively opt-in, whereas what we're talking about tonight is we have the program and you have to opt-out or you are in it. And I believe we looked at the differentials in the price, and it's much more advantageous to have an opt-out program.
Right. That's a good, good point. Any, any questions here on this?
I'll make the motion to approve a resolution initiating the submission of a public question to authorize the city to adopt an opt-out program for the supply of electricity to residential and small commercial retail customers.
I'll second it, but there is a typo on this resolution. It's on section two where it says "public question on pension sustainability." It says "shall be submitted to the voters of the city of Highland Park." We should probably change that, but I figured. But I will second the motion, subject to that change.
It's a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Novit?
Aye.
Alderman Johnson?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Bertie, and thank you, David. Good to see you back.
See you later.
He looks happy now.
Definitely. He looks happy on the other side of the table.
The second item on my report, I think, this is more where everybody's anxiously anticipating my announcement, sort of like, who's the next round dancing with the stars? Who is the next round of Dancing With The Stars going to be? Because let me first at the outset make two observations. Number one is, I have a tremendous amount of respect now for Lake Forest Caucus and know what they go through. We have We had, I think, close to 30 people apply for these positions, and quite candidly, I tell you that I was looking originally at about seven members, but quite can't, it was so hard to pick just seven people that ultimately selected the nine that are listed up there on the screen right now. It also, I guess, never ceases to amaze me about the talent level of people who live in this community and who are willing to step up and help out on a volunteer basis on various boards and commissions. So, I said, I had almost close to 30 people. For whatever reason, there was a lot of fourth ward people that wanted to be on this committee, and I wanted to make sure that we had geographic diversification and also that there was various skill sets of people that we were looking for so that we didn't have just all attorneys or finance people or whatever the case might be. Clearly, we wanted to have a mix of male and female on there. Also, one of the things that I was really looking for too was objectivity and somebody much like the caucus does in their vetting process to make sure that nobody has an axe to grind or is a single-issue person to be on here. And I think the other thing that really struck me with all of the applications we got, but particularly the ones that were selected, is just really their passion and commitment for Deer Path. Their sole interest was to make Deer Path better and to make it a sustainable golf course for a long time into the future. I'm pleased to say that Gary Chan, who is, I think, the CFO of Kraft Foods, is that, I don't have it in front of me, so.
The international component.
Is, is willing to take on his chair. The other members, we have IT-related people, we have marketing people, we have finance people. We did stick one attorney on the committee. Some of you might remember, know who he is. Alderman Edelman is on the committee as well. We have HR people. We have people that have been involved with turnaround businesses, and so I'm very pleased that this group, and I have spoken or contacted each of them, and they all are very interested in serving and moving forward. And after tonight, we will be getting together and trying to get a meeting here before Christmas, at least to introduce them to each other and also to get them, a lot of the background material, a lot of the background studies have been done over the last three to five years on the golf course so that right after the first of the year that they can get started and, and going forward. So, there is a lot of items that are on their agenda, and I think the challenge is going to be to get them focused on what needs to be done first because even though I know winter is just around the corner, believe it or not, the golf season's not far behind. And so, we're gonna have to really start working on some marketing issues, some golf operations issues that we really need feedback from this advisory committee on. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has. I'm sure you recognize a lot of the names that are up there, but I'm very pleased with the talent level of people that are on this committee, and I think between that and at the next city council meeting, we will be bringing forward to you a recommendation on agreement for clubhouse manager position, and I think between the new advisory committee and that position, I think Deer Path's future is very bright. So, I'll happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. Otherwise, that concludes my report for this evening.
Any questions for Bob? No? And I would just probably be redundant as well, but I think you're absolutely right, Bob. I wanna thank Susan Franzetti in the caucus for all her hard work because she's done a phenomenal job of, of getting people to step up and help out, and it's, it's, we do have tremendous, a lot of ability and talent in this community, but as, as all of our lives are very fulfilled and a lot of other events and efforts as well, it's hard to always get those people, and she's done a great job of, of, I won't, I'd say nicely twisting their arm, but she's, she's really done a fantastic job, so thank you, Susan. The next item on the agenda this evening is council committee reports, the first one being a finance committee, Alderman Panaleon.
Thank you, Mayor Cowie. The first item on our list of reports tonight from the finance committee is the audit committee report for fiscal year 2011, and I'd like to invite audit committee member Michelle Marino to step forward and present the results, and then this is, this, this'll be followed by a motion to accept the report.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council members. Representing the audit committee tonight, the committee has seven members, as you know. Chairman Alan Jacobs was unavailable, so I'm standing in for him this evening, in addition to myself, Amy Krebs, Andy Marwied, and Vicky Riker on the committee, along with the mayor and the finance chair. The committee met in April, July, and October of this year. New this year, as requested by the mayor, we, the committee did review the financial statements of Parks and Rec Foundation, Ragdell Foundation, and the Gorton Foundation. The committee found no reason to be concerned about the financial stability of any of these entities. In January, we will review the citizens, Senior Citizens Foundation, so that's on the calendar. Our auditors are McGladrey and Pollan, as you know, and we've been very pleased with their work at the committee level. The audit opinion is unqualified, it's absolutely clean, and has met all accounting requirements. The government-wide financial statements are on pages 16 and 17 of the material that you've been provided. We are on an accrual basis of accounting. Infrastructure assets, the government assets, including roads and bridges, totaled 232 million. The business-type assets, such as the water lines and sewers, et cetera, totaled 61 million. Fund financial statements are on pages 18 to 21. We are presented on a modified accrual basis of accounting for those statements. The major versus non-major funds are reflected, major funds being general and Parks and Rec Moving on in the materials, page 61 has the budgetary schedules. General fund balance increased by 1.3 million. This does reflect revenues exceeding expenditures. Revenues were more than budgeted, expenses were less than budgeted, so the city really did a fine job on, on managing through a very difficult economic period. Management discussion and analysis is on page three. It provides considerable detail, the transmittal letters in the introductory section, and the statistical section is actually my favorite, and there's a separate tab for that. Pie charts are always good. The financial statements are on the city's website, so they are certainly available to anyone interested, and the management letter did contain one comment in total. That comment is being addressed in fiscal year 12, and it related to the fleet expenses, as I recall. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I'll move to acknowledge receipt of the audit report for the fiscal year ending April 30th, 2011.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, the rest of the audit committee, for all your hard work as well.
Mr. Mayor, may I just, and I know that you and Alderman Panaleon know this because you are ex officio to the audit committee, but I think the rest of the council and certainly the public need to understand that not only do we have very talented people on the audit committee, but the city of Lake Forest is one of the few municipalities in the, in the country that even has an audit committee, and I think that this goes a long way in helping to understand the strong financial position that the city is in, and what is it, 24 years in a row, we've gotten the certificate of conformance on our audit, we have a triple-A bond rating, and that comes from dedicated people like the, like Michelle and others that serve on the audit committee and others, to really keep an independent eye on the finances of the city and make sure we don't get in positions like either a lot of other municipalities or certainly the state and the country have gotten themselves in.
And Bob, just to correct you, it's not 24 years, it's 32 years.
I knew it'd been a long time.
Yeah. Very well said, and I also would add that we welcome their oversight, so again, thank you, Michelle. Thanks, the audit committee. Our next item on the agenda this evening is consideration of an ordinance approving a fee schedule. This is a first reading presented by finance committee chairman, George Panaleon.
Thank you, Mayor Cowie. As part of the budget process, all departments reviewed their user fees. Total fee increases for established fees are estimated to be 30, approximately $31,000 in the Parks and Recreation Fund and $51,000 in the Deer Path Golf Course Fund. Revenue for the new fees related to development activity is estimated to be roughly $1,720 in the general fund. If the city council is in agreement with these new fees, the ordinance will be presented at a future meeting. A copy of the ordinance is available in our packet, and I would request a first reading.
I move to grant first reading of the ordinance related to annual fees for the Parks and Rec Fund and Senior Resources Fund. Did I get that right?
Do I have a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is also, George, is just consideration of an ordinance related to annual fees for the Parks and Recreation Fund and Senior Resource Fund, also first reading.
Thank you, Mayor Cowie.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my motion was, one motion before this.
I've had a hard time keeping track of this, too.
As I was saying, it doesn't sound right. Thank you.
Do you wanna redo that one, Bertie? Let's read, the first one we need is a motion for the consideration of an ordinance approving the fee schedule. This is for the first reading.
I kinda got ahead of myself there.
I need, I need a motion, and we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That, that motion carries. Now, we're on to the, the third item.
Okay. This is the consideration of an ordinance related to annual fees for the Parks and Recreation Fund and the Senior Resources Fund. What probably threw you off was that I made a reference to that in the first statement.
I'm easily thrown off.
As was discussed at the July 18th, 2001, 2011 Finance Committee meeting, an ordinance, this is an ordinance that will allow certain fees for the Parks and Recreation Fund and the Senior Resources Fund to be set by their respective boards and needs to be passed by the city council. This ordinance will also state that certain annual fees, such as memberships for the Parks and Recreation Fund and Senior Resources Fund, will be approved by the city council, and there's a copy of the ordinance in your packet on page 23. I would request a motion for first reading.
Quickly pointing out that there's no increases in any of the fees from Senior Resource. Thank you.
I will, once again, I'll move to grant first reading to the ordinance related to annual fees for the Parks and Rec Fund and the Senior Resources Fund.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. On to number, number four. George, you're up again.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2011. This is also first reading. This is most notably a request for a tax levy that is going down, which I think may be the first time that anybody can remember, but I think there've been a couple of comments tonight about the quality of the financial management of Lake Forest. I think we owe, the whole community owes a huge debt of gratitude to my predecessor, David Grumhouse, and Bob Kiley, and Kathy Reinertson for being extremely thorough, extremely diligent, extremely dedicated, and make, and to being willing to make some very tough decisions. And my first exposure to that was earlier this year when Kathy Reinertson came forward to me and said, gee, you know, if we pay off these bonds early and refinance now, we can save two or $3 million, I think. And we put that, that went through, it's very successful, and we're seeing the benefits of it in the budget that we reviewed at the finance committee meeting earlier tonight. So, thanks to the foresight and, what's the right word, the acuity of our, of our financial managers at Lake Forest, in, in the city of Lake Forest. So, I would request a motion for first reading of our declining tax levy.
I will move to grant first reading of the ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2011 for the city of Lake Forest.
Second. A voice, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next item, number five. George as well.
Okay, the next item is a, a resolution abating 2011 tax levies for various general obligation alternate, alternate revenue bond issues. That's a mouthful. Bottom line is, since these are general obligations of the city, they would be automatically passed through to the taxpayers if the city didn't abate them. We have other alternate sources of revenue that offset these requirements, and so we have to pass these abatements, otherwise essentially we'll pay double. So, I would request a motion for first reading.
And move to grant first reading of the ordinance as abating the tax levies for the various general obligation bond issues.
I'll second.
All in, oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, I believe that's you as well, George.
This is a request from the Ragdell Association for forgiveness of loan interest, and I'm gonna turn this over to Bob Kiley for a brief background.
Well, thank you, Chairman, members of the council. I know we have members of the Ragdell Foundation that are here that can probably speak more eloquently to the mission of Ragdell, but as background, a number of years ago, the property was donated to the city of Lake Forest, and the city tried, I think, to its best capabilities to maintain the property because this property represents another one of those jewels of Lake Forest, many people don't even know exist, but is one of the most significant artist colonies in the country. Despite our efforts, obviously, as you might suspect, there were competitions for public dollars to maintain the property, and through a, an agreement that was worked out, and I believe former Mayor Rummel, who is in the audience here today, was part of that conversation discussion, we basically turned over responsibility for the Ragdell property for, on a 99-year lease, so long as they maintain the property. And in your packet, I believe you received materials from them articulating the job that they have done since they became stewards of the property, full-time stewards of the property, to the tune of probably close to, what, $6 million? I don't have the number right in front of me. That has been done primarily through grants and fundraising on the part of the Ragdell Foundation. I know some of the aldermen took a tour of the renovation project that is underway right now for the main house and saw the hard work in effort that's going into that building, but that building actually represents one of the last structures on, on the site because they've renovated all the other facilities that are there. And the project of renovating the main house, the city did provide assistance through providing a loan to Ragdell, who wanted to proceed with the project, even though at that point they hadn't received 100 percent pledges for the cost of the construction. But the pledges with the assistance of former finance chairman, David Grumhouse, were fully collateralized. The risk to the city is, is almost negligible, and they've done a marvelous job of moving that project, and I believe they're, they're on schedule to have it completed by spring of next year. Having said all of that, they are out diligently working to raise money, and one of the obstacles that they found when they were out in the community was what has the city contributed to Ragdell? Since we turned this property over to them, we actually, I don't think, have put a nickel into Ragdell, and all the other improvements were raised through private donations. And so, the request that is before you this evening is one that technically, does it cost the city money? Yes, because we're, it's money that otherwise would have been earning interest, but it's, I think, a very strong goodwill gesture by the city council to show not only the Ragdell Foundation how much it appreciates all the hard work that they've done since they became full-time stewards of the property and raised close to $6 million, but also it will help them in their efforts to finish the fundraising goal and to complete the project. So, the recommendation that is before you this evening is to take So the recommendation that is before you this evening is to take or to forgive a hundred thousand dollars of the total interest that they would have, and I think the total amount is included in your packet, so that that can be offset to some of their other fundraising activities and help them bring closure to this very important community project. I'll be happy to try and answer any questions. I said I think there's representatives of Ragdale Foundation that are here this evening. I don't know who wants to speak. Oh, Susan's here. She, now, I'll just say, Susan approaches us, if you ask her one question, you're going to get about a fifteen-minute answer, but go ahead, Susan.
I didn't bring slides, Bob.
That's right.
Bob just did a great job of saying exactly what I would have said, and I know that many of you came over to see our work in progress. I, I will just say, I think it's been a remarkable partnership that we've had. I've been at Ragdale more than eleven years, and when I first came, we were working on a deal that gave us access to the property through the twenty-first century, and Bob Kiley looked me in the eye and said, and don't ever come back and ask me for a dime. And I never have. But I, I think that Ragdale really is one of the jewels, and this would mean a tremendous amount to us to take our partnership one step further, if that's something you would consider.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
Well, if there's no questions, and Susan, I appreciate, just from everything I've seen, and I appreciate all the efforts you've put in, but in recognition of the partnership really between the city and Ragdale, I'd move that we forgive the, the debt of the interest that's owed by Ragdale to the city at this point.
This is just the interest, not the principal.
Right. Yeah, I was trying, Susan, but okay, if he's going to get technical, just the interest.
I have, I have one question. Has this been factored into our budget for the coming year yet? And how will it affect our budget?
I wish Kathy Reinertson was here, but this is actually not within our budget, but it would be on, just on your balance sheet. And it will be factored in because I think Kathy is suggesting that part of it be done in this current fiscal year, but the majority of the forgiveness would occur in the next fiscal year.
That's what I understood. I asked the same question.
I apologize that I can't give you the correct financial terminology, but we'll get a response here.
We, we had that discussion, I think, Bob, George and I had that discussion when the request came up, and I believe that's the correct answer, Bob.
Okay, it won't put us in the deficit.
No, 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 this is, no, and the bulk of it would be in the second year, if I remember correctly.
It has minimal impact on fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, which would be twenty thirteen by the calendar, would have, would be, and it would be where the bulk of the hundred thousand dollars roughly would be felt, and that, you know, we have a full year to plan for that.
Right. Thank you.
If it was a principal, that would be another story.
Just out of curiosity, Bob, or maybe George, you know, what's, what percentage of the, the total interest that will be owed is the hundred thousand dollars?
I do have that. Hold on one second. I want to say it was like a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars would be the total interest. Is that right?
Yes.
A hundred and sixty-six, so this is.
So you're asking basically two-thirds.
Yeah.
Sixty percent, something like that.
Yeah.
Now, recognizing that over the last, I guess, ten years, the Ragdale Foundation has either raised or, or received grants for in excess of six point two million dollars, most of which has gone into the facility, which the city owns.
Actually, we've, we've raised twelve million, but we have reinvested six point two into the city's property at Ragdale.
And the magnitude of the renovations to the main house is staggering when you see it. This must have been Howard Van Doren Shaw's experimental home.
It was, it was his laboratory.
And things didn't always, he didn't plan for things to last a long time, and so there's a lot of surprise remediation, and that's, no complaints by the Ragdale Foundation, they've just, they've just gone and found the additional dollars, and they're moving ahead rapidly, so.
Do you need a second?
I do need a second.
I second your motion.
For the interests only.
Do we, Vic, do we need a roll call vote? Yes.
Tom Novick.
Aye.
Tom Walde.
Aye.
Tom Hahn.
Aye.
Tom Moore.
Aye.
Fifty-eight, ninety-eight, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie.
Thank you very, very much. This means a lot to us.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you for your contributions.
Our next item on the.
Now don't come back again.
Our next item on the agenda is a Gorton budget presentation. This is presented by Alderman George Pandoleone and Chairman Michael Lay.
Actually, I will simply invite Mike Lay to make the presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
I stood there last year and had to do this. I think you've got an easier job, so.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to talk about Gorton and where we are today and where we hope to go in, in two thousand and twelve, especially as it relates to the budget. But first, let me just acknowledge and thank Mr. Mayor, you and the council for the role you played a year ago in helping to get Gorton back on a sustainable course. A lot of work has been done this year in two thousand and eleven, but we've got a lot more to do, and I want to focus our, my remarks tonight on two thousand and twelve. As far as two thousand and eleven goes, I think there's three major points I would like to make. As you can see, first of all, we are debt-free and continuing to rely solely on program revenues, grants, and fundraising. And you'll see in a moment how important that last word, fundraising, is to our continued progress. Second of all, we had a hundred percent increase this year, two thousand and eleven, in net program revenues. Program revenues come from people who participate in activities at Gorton. And last, we had a twenty-five percent increase in net cash, cash balance from December thirty-first of last year to projected December thirty-first of two thousand and twelve, or eleven, excuse me. Gorton is home. It basically is a home to nine not-for-profit organizations who work really in a very collaborative environment, positively impacting the lives of over thirty thousand individual people in two thousand and eleven. That's an unduplicated total. And you can see, I won't read them, but those are the nine organizations there who really do play an important part in helping support people, not only people like Forest, but in surrounding communities as well. You know many of those, the Preservation Foundation, GLASSA, Lead and Speak Up, Lake County Cares, the Deer Path Art League Gallery, and Center Stage, the Symphony and Grace Ministry. Things that went on in Gorton in two thousand and eleven, we had twenty-five thousand visits, people enjoying Gorton programming and events this year, basically in the three categories that you see. The first one, performing arts for all ages, really takes advantage of a wonderful facility in our auditorium. You can see the, the Peter Pan, Rapunzel, all performing arts performances that had good attendance, especially the, what we call pasta, that's a performing arts summer theater academy. Adult programming continued as well, perhaps on a bit modified scale from in previous years, but both adults and children's programming. The thing that's amazing about it is that we're continually seeing people come to us with new suggested programs. And the other thing that I think is important to note is that in two thousand and eleven, we switched away from Gorton staffing, the production and management of a lot of programs, more to an entrepreneurial approach where we have people rent space, and they take care of, they produce the programs and so forth, and so that we don't have to incur that expense. It's really been pretty successful, but we have, we have a ways to go here, and I'm confident that we'll continue to, to advance here. There we see just some, some slides of what goes on among the twenty-five thousand visitors, including the first, upper left, that's our drop-in center, very popular program. A lot of families really make use of that. The second slide is from our Peter Pan production, the summer performance. We had two casts and really worked out far beyond our expectations in terms of the number of, of children that participated. Lower left, you probably recognize, is our Community Capers program that occurs, put on jointly by the, by Center Stage and the Chamber of Commerce. And of course, the last photo there is of all of our tenant organizations got together and worked together to have a float during Lake Forest Days in August of this year. Next slide really gets at the heart of the budget, and we're focusing on the revenue side here. First and foremost, I address, draw your attention to the, the two hundred and twenty-four thousand, the upper white right quadrant, the, the royal blue. That's thirty-one percent of our budget. The largest single source comes from fundraising, and that's about the same level percentage-wise as existed in, in two thousand and eleven. The second category there, the salmon-colored, is from, from the drop-in center. We see a bit of a challenge there that we hope to address and, and resolve in terms of participation with what went on in the economy in two thousand and eight and nine. We're hoping to see a bit of a bounce back next year, but certainly that's providing some challenges to us. Resident partner leases is the lime green. That comprises about eighteen percent of our revenues. The drop-in center is thirty percent, but going on to the eighteen percent for the resident partner leases. We think we've got some room to grow there through, through leasing a cup, two very large, not large, but sizable spaces on the second floor on the west end of the building. And then, of course, something I'll talk about in a minute in terms of our goals for next year to, to increase that revenues. I would also mention that this is a very conservative projection in terms of revenues for next year. We think we've got room to grow, as I said, in the, the resident partner leases. The first category, the fundraising and admin fees, we're actually projecting just slightly lower amount of money coming in from those sources next year, but that's an attempt to be conservative. The violet slice of the pie there, about nine percent, is from the day rentals and the, and the auditorium. We're hoping that with additional capabilities to lease space in, at the auditorium, really in the, especially in the performing arts, is another area that we would hope to, if we can, grow the revenues a bit more than projected. And last, but not least, is the money that comes in from programs. As I said, we're doing much better on the, on the bottom-line basis from programs because we are, in effect, outsourcing to the people who want to have the programs. We're putting the onus on them to, to produce the programs themselves rather than have Gorton staff do it. That's the, our goals, what we want to do next year, we plan, we hope and will sign a contract for a new Gorton website. We took about three-quarters of the year in two thousand and eleven to vet and get responses to proposals, responses to proposals for that. We had about five people bid on it, five firms. We chose one. It was also approved not only by the commission but by the foundation, and we expect to sign that contract later this week. We expect the project to be finished probably beginning of the second quarter next year, and that'll do two things really. It will allow us, I think, to let people know the space that we do have for lease, and second, and more importantly, it's going to help us in fundraising. Second item there, we want to market and lease the two remaining second-floor offices. They're basically at the west end of the building, second floor, nice space. And the third item is, is something new for Gorton, and that is to create a not-for-profit business center, a kind of a go-to place, professional space for new and small not-for-profit organizations that currently maybe have no space but maybe run off from someone's kitchen table. To bring them in, give them a space, a small space, phone, phone backup, and those sorts of things, basically to get them to come into Gorton. If they come in, it's our hope that once there, as they grow, and the incubator there, that they may be a candidate for leasing space in the future as they grow. Fourth item there is we want to host a community-wide focus group to explore future Gorton programs. That is to solicit from the community, what would they like to see there at Gorton that, that doesn't exist in the community at this point? And then last but not least, we want to plan to initiate some programs and events to meet other community needs and respond to that focus group effort. So with that, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding that you've had our budget spreadsheets before you prior to the meeting. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. With me is, is Brenda Dick, our Executive Director. If there's any questions that I'm not able to handle in particular detail that you want to get information on, she's here as well.
Any questions?
Just like to comment, my kids are way past that age now, but both my boys went to the drop-in center when they were the appropriate age. I don't know how many of the residents in town are aware of it, and I think we should underscore that as best as possible, maybe to increase your, your volume over there, but it's a tremendous resource to the community to have that drop-in center.
There's no question, and it's my hope that the website will, and not only the website, but our capability to use social networking, Facebook, and those things to really get the word out. I think we saw a bit of a challenge that was directly related to two factors recently. Number one, the economy and less flexibility on parents' part to have their kids come there, but more importantly, just the demographics of the community is such that with the housing market being what it is, we're not seeing the continual flow of younger families to our community. So we're hoping that, that the publicity will get out through the website and will also allow our submester to, to get out into the community more.
And Mike, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work you've put in the last year-plus, because as the public knows, Gorton had some, had some serious both financial issues and management issues, and you and Bob and the group that you put together has done a phenomenal job. I don't think any of us, well, I believed it, but I'm not sure, maybe the rest of the public might have believed that in a year's time that it would be completely turned around into a positive note in that you're in, in a great shape that you're in today. But that's to your credit and all the hard work that your group has done, and we, we thank you as all volunteers for doing that.
Well, you're very welcome. We, two things really contributed in addition to Bob and Nancy Novick's help in getting started, but Brenda, but, but the commission that you appointed, the other six members were, were blue chippers all the way, and they were willing to roll up their sleeves and take on special projects, and it's really helped. Everybody's pitched in.
And, yeah, I, I want to join in with Jim. You know, your efforts, the committee's efforts, Brenda's efforts, now there's stability, and having maybe a little more knowledge in a lot of the members of council, it's amazing that now there's a future that maybe we're off the endangered list at this point, and.
Well, let's hope so. As a member of the interim board as well, I, I said, well, two thousand and eleven is going to be a phase one to get, get back to a sustainable path, and I think we're still going to face challenges, but given the fact we've got everybody pulling in the same direction, it's, it's heartening to see.
Yeah, your efforts and ours are truly appreciated.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to accept the Gorton budget?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda this evening is consideration of health insurance contract renewals, presented by Deshae Gomer, Director of Human Resources. I know, Deshae, we had some discussion of this earlier during our finance meeting and, and talk about the, the budget coming up, but if you want to give us another quick synopsis and tell us how you're doing with.
and tell us how you're doing with your new health insurance contract renewals.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. What we're here tonight is to ask you to authorize the City Manager to execute the contracts that we need to do these renewals for our health insurance this year. This has already been discussed extensively at the PCA Committee level as well as the Finance Committee, so I will be brief. This year, we did RFPs for all of our providers. Basically, what we're recommending is that we retain professional benefit administrators for the administration of our claims and our billing services. We're recommending that we change our PPO network to Cigna for approximately a 4% to 5% savings in claim costs. We recommend retaining ING as our stop-loss carrier, retaining excess health as our transplant coverage, this is actually a component of our stop-loss coverage. We recommend retaining Serview as our pharmacy card service, and retaining Cigna for our life insurance at a slight decrease in a three-year rate guarantee. Be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have a single question.
I have one big-picture question. Can you just speak to the expected increase or lack thereof in overall health insurance costs for the city employees for the next fiscal year?
Yes, we're recommending a 4% increase in our health insurance, and in both plans, we have two different plans, both of which are self-insured, and then a 3% increase in dental.
So it'd be nice if it was zero, but that doesn't sound too bad to me, given the state of affairs of what's happening with my own personal health insurance.
Most plans are trending or increasing around 10%, 11%, so we feel fortunate to be able to come in at a 4% increase.
Any other questions for DeChey? I just want to say again, thank you for, you and Peter Wright, I know, I think you went through 26 different proposals and a lot of iterations of those proposals to get what I think is the best option for the city, so thanks for all your hard work as well.
Thank you.
And I think it definitely paid off with a very small increase, which is hard to do these days, so thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Six eight, no name, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, DeChey. Thanks, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Property and Public Lands Committee. This is Alderman Schoenheimer, and the item is a rejection of a request for bid offering by Baytree Bank located at the East Lake Forest Train Depot. Alderman Schoenheimer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you probably know, the Union Pacific owns the East Lake Forest Train Station, and the city actually leases the train station and then subleases the interior space to provide services to the residents and to the commuters. Northern Trust had been occupied under a sublease agreement and decided in 2008 for business decisions to remove their branch bank, and further in the summer of 2011 also decided to remove the exterior ATM. The city staff has been looking for replacements for those locations, but have really been holding off negotiating with anyone until, A, the Union Pacific lease is completed, and B, the ITEP grant, which has been received, was finalized. On August 29th, after those things happened, and obviously the renovations began, staff released a request for a bid proposal to replace the Northern Trust location, both on the interior and the exterior, and only received one bid proposal, that being from Baytree Bank. Baytree offered to either do the exterior ATM or to do a drive-through facility with two lanes. And the Property and Public Lands Committee met last week and discussed the kind of bigger-picture issue relative to the East Lake Forest Train Station, and decided to recommend to the council to reject the Baytree bid with the concept and the idea that we'd like to take a bigger swatch at kind of looking for a broader range of tenants, potentially tenants that kind of hold that, the train station together, offer a variety of different services, and a variety of different retail mix. So we've asked staff to go back and look at how to identify some of those tenants, and hopefully, in the best interest of the community, finding a good mix of those tenants to provide a great service to the residents and the commuters. But in the process of doing that, then, we need council tonight to reject the bid proposal from Baytree so that we can continue to go on that way.
How did the Baytree bid compare to the Northern Trust lease?
It was significantly less.
How long would it have been for?
It was just for a year.
We're not prepared to do this just for a year, even?
You know, I think, Bob, the discussion at the meeting was how limiting that might make it in the efforts to try to find something that gives us kind of a bigger picture plan. I don't think we're going to wait an extended period of time to do that, but I think the hope is over the next 60 or 90 days to see if we can create some other interest in the train station, to see if we can generate some other potential users.
But now, outdoor ATM for a year? This is just an ATM that would be on the outside of the building?
Yes.
I don't see how that really blocks us from developing the train station in other ways.
Well, let me clarify, because really, this was the drive-up facility and the ATM that's in the drive-up facility. So, and they have actually approached us and said that they knew, I don't want to say that they lowballed the number, but they knew that the number was low, but they're still interested if we want to look to do an ATM, or when we come back, we say we still want the drive-up facility. But I think the committee's discussion was for this nominal price compared to what we were, and I think Northern, to answer your question, was more in the $55,000 to $60,000 a year range, that we'll revisit this if we reach out to the community and we don't get any takers, then we can always come back and take another look at this.
Okay, and the drive-through facility is a freestanding facility?
That's correct.
Well, but somebody has to be inside the train station processing those transactions, so it's really for the whole space.
Okay.
Right. That's right.
Any other questions, comments?
I move to accept the staff recommendation to reject the Baytree bid.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Schoenheimer. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members.
I have one.
Yes.
Being newly appointed to the Golf Advisory Committee, I'd like to make a plug. Richard Franklin, the young pro there this past summer, has installed in the Sandwich Grill, after storing for the winter the chairs and tables, a Doppler Radar software golf swing analysis program. It's state-of-the-art high-tech, and it's available to the public, so that you can go in there and have them analyze your golf swing over the winter. I think the rate's fairly competitive, kind of attractive, so I'm just making a plug for winter activity at the Sandwich Grill.
There you go.
Guaranteed, thanks for showing up.
Any other comments this evening?
Aside from mentioning the tree lighting after Thanksgiving, no further comments.
No, we do hope you'll show up for that.
It's supposed to be nice weather, I think.
Yeah, the weather looks great, so I don't know if that's, if that plays in our favor or not, if people are out enjoying other things when it's 50 degrees out. But last year it was cold, I remember that, so please do show up on the day after Thanksgiving. Usually we light it around 5:15, I think, is when we pull the switch, right around here. I believe it is, somewhere in that area.
There's a train that goes through.
That's right, we have to time it with the train, so.
As long as ComEd doesn't disappoint you.
That's right, as long as we pay our bill right.
If you pull the switch, it might blow a transformer.
If they know we're going to opt out, they may opt out of our switch. Any other comments? No, then we'll move on to opportunity for public to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone from the public this evening? Anyone? No? Then we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have two items on the agenda. I am going to take them separately because the first one requires two separate votes on that one. So the first one is an approval of code amendment, Chapter 27, Park and Recreation Board. This is, the first one is a motion to waive the first reading, and then the second one is for grant final approval, so entertain questions, comments, or motion as you wish.
And if there's no comment, then I move to waive first reading to the ordinance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries, and we need a motion then to grant final approval.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Six eight, no name, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes from the November 7, 2011 regular City Council meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, and that takes us to ordinances, and our first ordinance this evening is a consideration of an ordinance amending the historic district boundaries as established by Chapter 51, the historic preservation of the city code of Lake Forest, to remove Old Main located on a portion of Barra Campus from the district. This is a first reading, and if desired by the City Council, final approval. This will be presented by Kathy Cerniak, our Director of Community Development. Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At your November 7 meeting, you had an extensive discussion about the requests from Woodlands Academy to amend the historic district map, to remove the portion of Barra Campus on which Old Main is located. You also heard significant public testimony. At that meeting, you considered a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission. That recommendation was to deny the request. In the council's discussion, you considered broader factors, and at the end of your deliberation, you directed staff to work with the city attorney, with Alderman Edelman and Alderman Moore, to bring back an ordinance to the council. That would be the first step in de-designating Old Main and amending the historic district map. That ordinance is in your packet, beginning on page 61. Importantly, that ordinance contains a number of whereas's, a number of findings, that really, based on the council's discussion, go a long way to distinguish this action from really any other situation that might come up. In particular, the whereas clauses discuss in depth the uniqueness of Old Main and the Barra property. They discuss the uniqueness of this opportunity that Woodlands has been presented with, and they also discuss the effort that the City Council has made over the past 10 years to really find a way to both preserve Old Main and to find a use that is really compatible with the historic district and the surrounding neighborhoods. If you choose to approve this ordinance tonight, again, it is only a first step. Approval of the ordinance, or the effective date of the ordinance, would be subject to a number of conditions. The council has taken this approach before with other developments to indicate their interest in moving forward with a particular project, but also their interest in assuring before the ordinance is effective that various conditions are in place. If you choose to approve this ordinance tonight, then that would be the first step, as I noted. The second step would be that a request for an amendment to the special use permit for Woodlands Academy would go before the Plan Commission. Anticipating the council's action tonight, Woodlands Academy, with the consent of the property owner, has already filed that special use permit request. So tentatively, we have scheduled Plan Commission consideration of that special use permit amendment for December 14th. After the Plan Commission holds a public hearing and takes action, I can't say tonight whether that would take one meeting or two meetings, then the recommendation of the Plan Commission would come back before the City Council. Based on your discussion, based on public comment, to date, we do understand that your direction is that the Plan Commission consider a number of items, and as noted, as a condition to the ordinance that's before you tonight, it's expected that the special use permit that could eventually be recommended to you contain a number of terms and conditions. We're not establishing those conditions tonight because that really is the purview of the Plan Commission. But just to set out initially some of the issues that we would expect the Plan Commission to consider, and perhaps include conditions in the special use permit, again, based on your conversation, that there is a condition that would require incorporation of the full 23 acres of Barra Campus into the Woodlands property, that the special use permit would specify the permitted uses. We've talked about those as all being educational-related. The Plan Commission may wish to narrow those a bit, work toward the preservation of open space, ravines, trees, consider safety improvements that may be able to be achieved with the driveway and Sheridan Road, consider stewardship of the cemetery, consider timing, both of the special use permit and any future proposals for Woodlands Academy to add structures or any type of development on the property, but also, we've heard from the City Council that if the demolition of the building moves forward, you'd like to see that move forward in a consistent fashion to move so that there isn't a delay and we don't have a lengthy time where there's a building that's partially torn down. We've discussed a requirement for a historic American Building Survey to properly document Old Main, and a plan for reuse recycling to ensure that before any demolition permit is issued, that certainly traffic issues, containment issues on the site, all those are addressed. So again, this is intended just as an initial list of some of the suggestions that might be included in the staff report. But again, tonight, if you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval to an ordinance de-designating Old Main, and importantly, that ordinance will not become effective until a special use comes back before you and you are satisfied that all the conditions of the ordinance are satisfied. I would be happy to answer any questions.
I move to waive first reading of the de-designation ordinance.
I'll second.
Well, wait, I think we had a question from Mike.
Yes, sir. I do have a question, and maybe it's more appropriately directed to City Attorney, and that is, the special use permit's going to be pretty detailed and pretty tight, and a lot of concerns expressed about, is this a backdoor to somebody getting down Old Main and turning it into a development, per se? Is it possible for us, with this special use permit, to also negotiate with the appropriate parties, the title holder, the donor, Woodlands, some restrictive covenants that go in the deed of conveyance, which give even a little bit more teeth to our special use permit? Are we out of line?
I would anticipate that we will be having restrictive covenants that will be enforceable by the city, consistent with the overall use of this as an educational facility and the other conditions of the special use permit.
Great.
And further, we would likely be recording the special use permit, and that, too, would have some record conditions on the property.
So that would run with the land?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you could just add it to the laundry list that you give to the Plan Commission, that'd be great.
Sure.
Kathy, before we forward, I just have some questions, and I'm confused when I read the ordinance, and maybe a little dizzy. Yeah, and it's, maybe it's the hour and maybe the events, but we've gone through a long process for approval, or a short process, and we're pretty much rushing to hit certain deadlines, and those deadlines were imposed to affect the sale of the property before the end of the year. And that condition was that we could assure the approval of the demolition of Old Main to affect the sale before the end of this year. But the ordinance itself says, well, we're not really approving the demolition of Old Main or taking it out of the district, and that's contingent on, within the next 12 months... months submission of, and this would be approved within twelve months of the date of this ordinance, unacceptable terms and conditions that are submitted to council. So with this put in here, is it possible that the sale wouldn't go through? Where are we? I'm truly, truly troubled and confused by how the ordinance is worded. It doesn't make much sense to me.
We did hear the council that you wanted to be assured of certain things happening before this property was removed from the district. This ordinance is written in response to that. We have had discussions, and the petitioners are aware of this ordinance. Whether, it's my understanding that it likely is workable. At this point, we can't give them certainty that all of the conditions are met. Certainly, there's a strong indication of support from the council for the gift that Woodlands has been offered, but we also heard from the council that you do want us to go through a deliberative process and to achieve the terms and conditions, to settle upon the terms and conditions. The appropriate process is to take the special use permit through the plan commission and then to bring that back before you.
So likely, the sale wouldn't occur until we could come back and approve those conditions.
I can't speak to that. I know there are representatives of the petitioners here. I'm not even sure that they know the answer at this point, but they certainly have heard from the council. There is an interest in supporting Woodlands in this effort, but that the council is interested in understanding the details, the terms and conditions.
Yeah, I mean, just unfortunately speaking my mind, we've been rushing to the finish, and then to achieve this by December twentieth, and then we're not really there, so the sale could occur, might not occur, it's all kind of up in the air, so I'm troubled by our need to rush and then to pull back when we could have had broader consideration.
Can I chime in on that? Personally, I don't feel that we're rushing, and I don't feel a sense of having to rush. It's a multi-step process, and we're doing it very methodically, one step at a time. Our timeline may not mesh with the timeline that the title holder, donor, and Woodlands have in mind, and if it doesn't, all of this unravels and we're back to where we are today. We're going to do it the right way, and if they can work with that, great, and if they can't and their deal falls apart, all of this legislation unwinds, correct?
Okay.
It's pretty simple.
So just to clarify, so we haven't met the timeline, so we're waiting for a response?
We are, we're going through the city process methodically. We were able to get this on a number of meetings quickly, meeting agendas quickly, but the important thing is that by acting tonight, the council is not removing this property from the district without understanding what the long-term use of it is and without getting the commitments as discussed by Alderman Edelman. So it is an appropriate next step in moving forward, an issue that the council certainly has voiced some strong support for.
If I might add, one of the things that this ordinance does do is that if Woodlands moves forward with the special use permit and satisfies the city's with respect, the city's interests with respect to the future use of this property, this ordinance does give them some assurance that it will be de-designated and therefore will be, Old Main will be subject to demolition at some point in the future.
Okay.
But I think that certainly the staff and our office heard the council's concerns at the last meeting, and we proceeded not according to the applicant's desire, but rather to the city council's desire, and I think that the applicants have understood that and recognize that this is a progressive approach to the issue.
Okay, so the process is slowing down to a certain degree, and we have a year.
We're just going our pace.
Okay.
The signal's been sent out.
Yeah, and I appreciate, and I do think it's wise to slow the process or to have the ability to fully consider the future use of this property. So, yeah, with that, I could support this. Thank you.
I'd like to add one area of concern that I think the plan commission needs to consider very carefully, and I think, I don't know, maybe it's the city council. This building is not going to be inexpensive to demolish. It's, it has a lot of stuff in it, let's just say. And so I think one thing we need to be very careful of is making sure that we understand how that is actually going to be financed, because we have, all we've heard about is the donation of the land with the building and a stipulation that it be demolished. We have, to my knowledge, I certainly don't understand exactly what the prospects are for Woodlands to actually be able to pay for that.
Are the donors?
It would be the donors, I believe.
Well, I'd like, I think that needs to be made very clear, and I think it also needs to be demonstrated financially.
It is staff's understanding that the donors will be turning over essentially a blank canvas to Woodlands Academy, but we certainly can make sure that's covered and delineated in the terms and conditions.
And to carry that one step further, I think we're addressing the mountains in the back as well.
Correct.
Actually, a lot of that could have been sold for some of the major road improvements that have been put in around here over the last couple of years, but for whatever reason, the owner decided not to pursue that.
I believe. Any other questions or comments for Kathy? No?
Just again, if you choose to do so, it would be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. Thank you.
There's a motion second pending.
Right, so.
Okay, I'll take the break.
If no more, then we will go back to the motion that's standing and ask, all in favor of the first?
Waiving first reading.
Waive the first reading.
Aye.
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 We have public comment?
If the council chooses to, you can certainly entertain comments.
Okay. If you wish, anybody in the public want to make public comment? Go ahead.
Thank you, Pauline Moore, two thousand Noelwood Road. I'd like to comment on this process that you've gone through, and let me say that it's very uncommon to delist a property for the purpose of demolition. In fact, in the Preservation Foundation's research, we couldn't find one example in the state of Illinois. The normal process and what our ordinance calls for is the petitioner to go to the Preservation Commission and ask for a certificate of appropriateness for demolition. Now, if they don't get that, they go back and plead for hardship. And in this case, I'm pretty sure that they would get a demolition on the basis of hardship. You've heard all of the testimony on the cost of rehabilitation of that building, how in seven years we haven't had anyone step forward who could credibly, you know, rehab that building and use it for any kind of profitable purpose. When I talked to Bob Shaw about his rehabilitation, he said, and of course, he was doing condominiums, he was putting in underground parking and doing a lot of other things that would not be done in, you know, another case, but his costs were thirty million dollars, as he told me, and he did not expect to turn a profit on that. His profit, he hoped to break even on that. So it isn't unusual that you, you know, it's understandable that no one has stepped forward with a credible plan for the building for rehab, but I really don't like the way you have kind of skirted around the process, and I really do not agree with Alderman Edelman. At the last council meeting, he said this strengthens the commission. In no way do I see it strengthening the commission. I don't know that it weakens it, but it certainly doesn't strengthen our ordinance, and we have our ordinances. The only protection the citizens have is through the ordinances and the law of this city. So I'm just really not very happy with the process that's gone on to achieve the demolition of this building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment?
I move to grant final approval.
We had the, we voted on the first reading?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to make sure we're on it. All right, we have a motion to grant final approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 Sixty-eight, no names, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Our next item on the agenda this evening is new business. We have one item, it's a resolution approving public comment rules, presented by city attorney Vic Philippini.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The General Assembly approved an amendment to the Open Meetings Act that took effect earlier this year, and it required public comment at any public meeting. We obviously have done this as a matter of course. There were a couple of quirky components to that bill, among them that it was allowing public comments to public officials. It wasn't quite clear how to address that since you meet collectively as a board as opposed to as individual officials. The resolution you have before you tonight is to adopt what I would call a baseline set of public comment rules for all of our public bodies. It also does, if you note in paragraph five, it shows up on page seventy-one of your packet, it does provide a means for public comment to public officials, trying to accommodate what the General Assembly said, whatever they meant. So I would recommend the adoption of the resolution. I don't believe that this is going to result in any kind of material change in what you do. It does also set up a general policy for all of our subsidiary boards that allows them some flexibility to customize their public comment rules for their individual purposes. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Why are we doing this by resolution as opposed to ordinance?
We don't need to do it by ordinance, and as it's a matter of rules that we might want to have adjusted, the policy in this respect can be done in that fashion. It's a little more flexible in that fashion.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
You have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Any other additional items for council discussion this evening?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.